I would like to call the November 30th meeting to order at seven o'clock if we can please rise from the public legions. Did we lose them?
Yeah, I don't see anything. It says Dr. Willett left the meeting.
Recording stopped. Recording in progress.
Yes, so now the hour is back to it's better. Okay, so now I think we're we're rocking and rolling. Let's move to the approval of minutes for the number for November ninth and then the seventeenth. I'll enter in a motion.
A move that we accept the minutes from the ninth and the seventeenth.
Oh, I guess I'll second. I won't pay attention tonight. We'll do the roll call votes since there's only three of us on here and everyone is on Zoom, so let's start off with Dana. It's like the family pretty much. Okay, well, let's get Dana. Dana, get yourself ready to vote on the approval of minutes. We'll go to floor.
Aye.
Eden?
Aye.
Sophia?
Aye.
Dana?
Aye.
Tony?
Aye.
Griffin?
Tell upstairs, wasn't I even?
And I therefore it's the majority, they're approved as is. At this point, we can open up public participation. We do not have anyone in the audience, therefore everyone will be online. If you would like, please raise your hand and I will call on you and please list your name and address for the minutes. Going once. Going twice. Okay, I will close out the public participation. Let's move on to correspondence. Jacob is not here. So let's go to points of information. Do any board members have any points of information they would like to say at this time or? Doctor Will, do you have anything? If not, any board members to raise their hands, we will move on to our student representatives report. Okay, let's move on.
Okay, so Mira is supposed to be somewhere. Mira, hello. Okay, Mira's starting.
There we go. Sorry, my allergies have been acting up, so that's I'm not I'm not in person.
No problem. Thank you for joining us.
Of course. One second. Okay, so of course break just happened, so we don't have too much exciting information. But the engineering program is doing a field trip to the J.F. Frederick Arrow Arrow factory, which should be supposed to be pretty interesting. They're going to tour and they might supposedly meet with the CEO.
Club pictures happened on Tuesday. Everyone was kind of ushered into the gym. Every club except I think Deca took pictures after school on Tuesday and I was there because I am in too many clubs and they ran through like.
The juniors and seniors, the officers are hosting a flag football. And this is going to be like a all-inclusive powder puff to so they're like they had an informational meeting earlier this week and I think this must be raising money, which should be pretty good.
Tolland Idol is happening this Friday. It didn't happen last year because not enough participation. But we have a bunch of sports teams doing it. I think there are some others doing it, so it's going to be a lot of fun. I won't be able to go, but I know that a lot of people are planning on going and I think that'll be very nice.
Annie finished casting and starting rehearsal this week, which is pretty exciting. I've heard some like chatter about it throughout the school and it's supposed to be really good, so I'm excited.
And finally, biggest announcement of the day, the marketing class at THS is doing their annual little selling thing this year. They are selling sweatpants with the Tolland logo on them. They're selling for $28 and they're selling to the whole school for the next two weeks. Additionally, the business pathways program is hosting a like kind of a TED Talk sort of thing with Mrs. Bridges' son Tyson. It's the Talk with Tyson. Fifty-six people have signed up for it, so you know, it's a it's going to be a pretty big deal. It's going to have like breakfast, I'll cook out. Supposed to be very fun from what I've heard. And I have a special offer for you all today because someone's in marketing class. Get your sweaty sweatpants.
Do I have the board's permission to wear them on dress standards?
Absolutely.
Yeah.
Save me one of those. I want my swag.
You know, after that, I made that one. I made that.
You guys were missing out by not being in person.
Huge loss.
It was a different time, winter break, like yeah.
Before Christmas. Right before Christmas. It can be an amazing Christmas gift.
This is fantastic.
Anyways, keep that in mind. Tell your friends, tell your family if you need more of these, they will be on the Tolland discussion page. Or like the QR code will be on the Tolland discussion page, so if you know anyone who would want these or you know anyone who would maybe want to get someone these for Christmas, you know, let them know and then tell them that I built them too because you know I want some boys. But yeah, that is all for super fun. Yep.
This is fantastic. No, I love that you actually brought this in and to share with it and I, like I said, I love that you have a QR code because I think that is fantastic in the way of the world now. So that is awesome. I'm surprised you don't have them on here. You have cash.
We're not allowed to.
Oh.
Because I don't think the school, it's an interesting thing, but we're not allowed to. So I don't I forgot how it works, but Ms. Bridge explained that we're not allowed to, but we might in upcoming years.
Okay, well, thank you for that.
Next, Shark Tank.
That's this Friday. Shark, oh, she wanted me to mention that too. I had a whole discussion with her after school about this. So Shark Tank is coming up. We're having guest judges. It's a journey. I'm very excited for it. We have all created our own coffee shops. So we all create our own coffee shops, create a whole executive summary, have a ten-minute presentation. It's very much like a real Shark Tank, you know, just a little bit longer. And then we have our like actual major Shark Tank where we have to come up with a product of our own at the end of the semester, which we've started working on now and it's it's a lot, but it's very fun and a lot of people really like it. It's a highlight of the year.
It actually sounds like a lot of fun because I like that it's with what's happening in the world now with the shows and going through and I think it's a way to have the interest in businesses. So I think that's fantastic.
And Ms. Bridge is able to bring in, especially for the final Shark Tank, people from actual businesses around town.
Fun.
Um, but yeah, so for this one, we do have some guest judges. For the next one, we're going to have even more guest judges. It's a very exciting opportunity.
And you said it was a coffee.
No, so this this is our practice Shark Tank. We're all making prototypes based around coffee shops. Like we all like there are Yukon coffee shops. We have two coffee shops called the Daily Grind. They're going simultaneously. Probably very nice. My coffee shop is called the Green Bean, an environmental coffee shop. It's very interesting, but yeah, it's great.
Any other questions for her?
Oh, and Ms. Bridge wants to let you know that the Business Pathways is awesome and it should get funding again.
Which is season is rolling around. Thank you so much for that and I love your excitement about everything as well. Seeing that there's no other questions, we can move on to the surprise events report section.
Okay, so I want tonight. Yes. Stevenson Scholarship. This is just for consideration and can move to action whenever everybody has some desire. We just need to update the signatories on the MNT bank accounts. So MNT shifted over, took over a bank. This is a scholarship that is old and kind of shifting the way we're doing it. Request that from the family, so this is just updating the signatures as well, so.
Have they not provided a scholarship in the meantime because Guzman's been gone for a long time now even?
There was a desire to, there had this scholarship been run for a long time and I think the family was ready to to transition out of doing that.
Okay. Any questions?
Yes.
Go ahead, Tony.
So Dr. Will, just looking through the the background information here, I guess I might understand that the action you'd be looking for the board is to authorize the update of the signatures or?
It just says here. The motion to update the signatories, so it just allows us then to to do that, to update them into the to my name and to the air of the current business managers. Because this was this was still got their old people's names on it, so. We want to put the new names on it and then we kind of get it going again in a manner of form.
And I apologize for just trying to get my head wrapped around. Once your name and business manager's names are on there, what then will your responsibility be as far as to this?
So at that point, it just like all those funds, it's just getting it up to date and then we just read, we we start to do it again in a manner that I think that.
So will you be putting this scholarship fund with the other scholarship funds? Okay, so it's you're just going to transfer the money?
Well, it's it basically stays, it's just that we can distribute it.
Okay, so it's its own checking account?
Yes, it's its own account and probably we've run it for six more years than it would.
Oh, then it would be whatever's on there. Okay, got it. Thank you.
Okay, any other board member questions online? Okay, looks like we're all set.
So Matt, do you want to motion to move this into action?
Yeah, if everyone feels comfortable enough of doing that, I certainly would entertain a motion to move it down to L3. You go ahead.
A move that we move this item to board action L3.
Just give it a second.
Okay, we will do a roll call vote. Okay, Dana?
Aye.
Sophia?
Aye.
Yeah?
Aye, just a heads up, my camera's not working, so I'm trying to figure that out, but aye.
And floor?
Aye.
Aye.
And I'm an I as well, so we will move this on to L3 for the Stevenson Scholarship. School calendar.
All right, it's that time of year again. Second here. It's. So it is that time of year again. This has been to policy, it's been to the TEA and to task, which are usually the places we go prior to you know, moving it to review for the entire board. Some of the highlights of it, parent teacher conferences for grades K through 12 are in there the full day off November 22nd to provide families needed travel time is in there. These are things that were requested and you know when we reviewed it, people had put out. A full day for December 22nd is responsive to needs and requests that were made. It adheres to the East Con calendar, which is our obligation to the state to fulfills contractual obligations, provides enough days to mitigate the potential impact of cancellations. Faculty in-service days, February, and it's aligned with the non-school days so that that parents, parent guardians, families can have a little bit more time for that long weekend. A reasonable number of early release and full professionals in-service days are in this calendar. There's not a, you know, in the past, there's been as many as 14 and we're still still with about eight here, I think, standard for what we've had typically the last few years. And the early release days are set up on Wednesdays, which will provide student populations of more continuity of instruction, having on Fridays didn't work in the distant past, which is why the last couple of years we haven't taken. And it's been reviewed by the parties that I mentioned before, so your calendar here has 182 days. That's why every day's any, you know, snow days, the board has some flexibility there because if things go awry, the board can instruct me to work with the union and we could lower that to 180 if we absolutely had to. If snow days were greatly impacting us, the projected last day is June 17th, the projected first day is September 5th. That was also desired. We originally had an earlier start date that was very unpopular with almost every group, so you know, the after you know, after the Labor Day break or after Labor Day was the preferred time, so that's why those are in those positions, so.
Because I mean, it feels like we're getting out like the seventeenth seriously ago. Like, but.
Go ahead. You want me to start?
Yeah.
Well, I have my handy dandy little notes from last year at their time. So in the past 17 school years, we have only started after Labor Day four times. Three of them were due to buildings, to the two Birch Grove years and back in 2006 when the high school was built. The other year was 2011, which for those of you who were in Tony, were you connected?
No.
Okay, that would have been Hurricane Irene. So school was supposed to start before Labor Day, got pushed back. So I cannot support any school calendar that starts this late without a reason. When for 17 years, we have always started the Wednesday before. Now, I would support the Thursday before because I recognize that it's in the teacher's contract that they can only do three PD days before the start of school. And I remember from last year, we didn't want them to start on a Friday, so I can get behind that. But I will not support any calendar that does not start any later than August 31st. That's just my own personal thought on that.
In policy, with the descriptions, in policy, you meant something about that date moving to the right due to a 10-day vacation period or something?
Yeah, it's such a short summer that we have some contractual obligations where people have to return within 10 days of the beginning of the year, which provides some issues with summer school and it provides some issues with with some, one in particular, the contracts trying to get people back in.
They have to be in town 10 days?
They have to be in in their seats.
That's the admins, correct? Not the teachers.
That group is the admins, but then you also have ESY pushing into the time that we would use it. ESY usually extends to that time period too. It's just a very short summer with days.
Yeah, but as we
And it was very.
Start early though, and if we have snow days, then just pushes out the next summer and the next summer.
My original versions of this started right about where Miss Griffin is asking.
We talked about 17 years. You have started the Wednesday before.
After now, you draw my memory, like we said the Wednesday, but then we didn't want to have that Monday, Monday, Tuesday, because then the staff would come back that Friday. And so we said that's not a good idea.
That's all my notes I have from last year. I'm getting everything from last year.
Yeah, I, you know.
I think the entire district expects to start before Labor Day.
Because then you have the two days.
The teachers most likely expect to start before Labor Day. We always have. I think that's a fair compromise to start those two days before Labor Day. Have a nice week to kind of ease back into it. And then
Well, you have the two days, then you have three days off.
Right, then you start.
Yeah, I mean, it's it's run by the TEA. So that's where I originally had rights too, but that was before I ran it through these these groups. So it started.
However, the board that's not going to support.
Yeah, it's your it's your choice, but
Just the pride I guess.
History of it here.
It's never been this way. I'm just surprised that it's it's such a hot topic, if you will, all of a sudden this year when, like I said, 17 years.
Because then that that puts that last day then at 13th and that makes more sense because then you're starting, you're starting those two days. Then you're not pushing with snow days, so if you have a couple of snow days, then you go into that week, but everyone dreads going into
The week of the 24th, yeah, imagine.
Yeah, I that's I think that's what we've said even last year with the calendar. Go ahead.
And my concern, we discussed this briefly in policy, is is on that that back end. Because if you recall, the end of June is our, no kidding, we have to stop the date. So with schools starting after Labor Day as it is, it pushes us, what is it, Dr. Will and I can't, can you scroll down? Okay. Your point, if we have snow days, if we have anything, our ability to adjust is very small. Now, now we have to start looking at removing vacation breaks or cutting days out of school instead of having that cushion at the end. And to the point I think you two were making, at some point, we're going to keep moving to the right if we don't fight the bullet at some point, I started.
Members online, anybody want to use their hand, jump on in for a conversation? Dana?
I'm sorry, did we say what day that the end of school year would be if we did start prior to Labor Day? How many days that pushes back?
Yeah, so I think it would be the 13th if I'm.
Versus the 17th.
Right. So it would be Thursday versus Monday, including snow days.
I mean, I just think that and what was the key? I mean, we talked about this a little bit of policy. I know we didn't totally get into the deep dive into it, but one of the big, what was the big driving force, Dr. Willett, for starting after Labor Day? I mean, I'm all for, you know, keeping things consistent, but I'm also open to opportunities to change to better benefit the school and the school systems, the students and staff. So I guess having that open conversation and open dialogue for why we would have pushed it versus keeping it before Labor Day. I know some people think it was like, why do we go back for two days and then have a long holiday and then go back? So some people conversely might appreciate the fact that we're starting school today, but I just didn't know what was the driving factor and what was the conversation with the TEA?
I think there were, there were a couple of driving factors because the original did not have it that way. And I think it was that it's a, it is a, it is a short summer, probably in the history that you're speaking of, Ms. Griffin, is one of the shorter ones because of the timing. So it doesn't, it starts early, starts on when, you know, in that span of time, it's just a much shorter one for some reason people didn't look at. There is a contractual piece with task that, you know, there's a 10-day period which pushes that back, which makes it kind of a shorter window for them, which means there'll be a lot more cramped in requests for leave. And so the availability of certain people to get things done over the summer will be much more constrained because it's probably a lot of people will be trying to get it right in the same span of time. TEA, I think, again, back to moves, just they 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 wanted a little more space before the beginning of the year this year because of all the adjustments they've had to make and I think they felt it was a short summer. ESY has an impact because it usually uses that span of time and you staff that will work, but they may not as many may participate or people that we need, if it runs right up against the beginning of school for them because they don't you know, they don't they don't have time to read before they have to jump right in. There are, and I think some parent guardians that had talked about it, I'm not sure exactly who they were, but I think that was brought up. Wanted or more and more comfortable with with being after Labor Day this year. So like I said, it wasn't in my original drafts. This was changed to accommodate people's.
You by chance have an original then?
One of my early versions, yeah, but here, I mean, it has other things in it too. If we're going to change this, then let's just change this, the other one we have. There's, I think, four versions of this as I took in feedback, you know, and it landed here. I mean, I can pull up one of the other ones and it would be Harold.
While you're pulling that up, oh, shoot. I just had a dog knock on my earbuds. I apologize. While you're pulling that up, Dr. Wood, I think one of the big conversations that I recall us having last year was February vacation, do we have it at all? And and have a good start time that was that our educators were prepared for and our families were prepared for and have a good end time at the end of the year. And I know that the big conversation has been, do we forego February vacation, the 19th, what about the 19th and the 20th? You know, I know we circled around that a lot as well last year during this conversation. I just wanted to point that out there. I think we have some flexibility to move in different, in all different aspects of of the calendar, not just that's all, but that's all I have all you before. Thank you.
Floor?
Thank you. You probably can't see me because we don't have power here. The thing I struggle with is the half day in November, like I just feel like there's not a, well, there is one full week of school in November, just the two half, you know, the day and a half for parent teacher conferences and then you get a week and then there's another half day and then there's three days off. So I struggle with that November 15th. I think I struggled with that last year as well. Maybe we took one out. And as far as the start date goes, I think, wouldn't the summer be longer if we ended earlier? Like if we get back on that track, we can if we're not getting out June 27th, then the summer will be longer. So if we just start earlier and end earlier, I feel like it's the better thing to do, but open to discussion on it. Thank you.
Okay, Sophia?
I was just going to say that I thought we had a very healthy discussion about this in policy and we did talk about the start date being in August or being after Labor Day. I'm comfortable with this calendar. I think it's pretty well balanced, even the half days. And I I think it, I think it's a great calendar.
Adrian?
Yeah, thank you. Well, I completely understand, can you hear me? I completely understand everyone's points here. Dr. Will, I do have a question. Do, what is the frequency of half-days look like in comparing districts? Because half-days are, you know, important both for, you know, if if folks can't get out of work and get home in time and all that, as well as professional development days, I'm pretty sure. So what does that sort of take away if if we eliminate, you know, like a November half-day or we start again earlier? I just feel like there's, there's a lot of prep time in that that you know, I I feel like we should consider before necessarily voting on this.
Yeah, so some districts have these days every Wednesday. Some of them don't have them at all. A lot of districts that didn't have them are putting them back, I've noticed as I look around. For us, they're crucial because we don't have a lot of PD days built in. Our early release days are our PD. So if we don't have those, we're not doing CT sets training, we're not doing like all of these things that have to happen for our staff to be, you know, trained in what they have to do or you know, and to avoid having to disrupt the regular school day by pulling teachers out of classrooms for other kinds of things. We have these ER days, so they they are extremely well utilized here. But and they they are our district's tool for getting this worked there. Otherwise, we would be in trouble. So we we really need these days. Having the ones that are on here, these are a modest number compared to like past requests. This is more in, this is in alignment with the last few years with respect to the number. And so, you know, some other places they have them every Wednesday, you know, it's just a matter of practice, but this saves us a lot by having these days. So we, you know, I I would say we need all the ones that are in here. That's just my thought. And I think, Mr. Regis, but you had another question, I'm sorry, but then you got the second question or there were two questions there, right?
No, it was.
No, it was, it was just the the focus. I I'm just curious because I know for a fact Manchester every Wednesday is a, is a, is a half day, is a uh, uh, professional development day. And so when, when I look at our calendar, even, you know, as a new board member last year, uh, I didn't realize how 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 few we had relative to other districts. And so, you know, that, that's why I'm so curious because again, other, I know other districts have. I mean, every week and that that benefits, um, you know, faculties espe- especially. So uh, that, that was, it, that was, it sounded like two questions, but it was all one.
Yeah, no, it, so I would agree, they are very important.
Okay, um, I did pull up the calendar before we go around again. For this year, and it looks like we did start off on that Thursday, so it would be the same as the thirty first because of the way that it falls. But there was, we did not have the, um, professional development in November. But we did have one in January, so we have the same amount of days. But none.
Yeah, out of January.
Yeah.
Yeah, we moved it out, January was, was, people felt that was too coughing, you know.
But they felt like November was important.
They felt November was better because it was an earlier time, things could be handled earlier in the year and it wasn't. January was looked at as particularly bad time to have an E R. That was the feedback that was received this year. I do have one of the earlier versions, one of the earlier versions had the first day of school on the twenty fifth. That was one of the first.
Well, I think the twenty fifth would be a little bit.
Right, and then, and then, you know, people talked about it and then it was looked at as the next week.
Put that as an option, I mean.
Well, yeah, it's one of the options. And you know, I let people kind of develop different, uh, but then it you know, where it ended, where it landed and went through policies was.
Well, okay, so people are opposed to the twenty fifth, which I would be opposed to the twenty fifth as well, but what about the thirty first?
Is that projected last day of school this year?
This year, it's the, uh, fifteenth. I'm looking at that now.
Okay, so I just looked at the calendar. If we go to the twenty third, so that would basically be six to seven snow days. Students and staff or teachers, I should say, would still have nine full weeks of summer vacation. I'm pretty sure nine full week summer vacation is kind of the norm.
But that's also just having those two days because once again, as soon as you put, so say we did that this calendar last this past year, it would have bumped us to that Monday again, which then is that whole week. So I personally would like to see a calendar start with the thirty first. That's what I was. But, um, let's continue going on here. So Dana? Oh, you had your hand.
No, I'm good.
We can't hear you, Dana.
Are you, you there? Yeah, okay, sorry, I see you. Um, yeah, cause it's something, again, Sophia said that we had a good, healthy conversation, uh, in policy. It was actually really a fantastic conversation. And one of the things that I brought up, because I remember Christina bringing up the November concerns with P D and half days and conferences and da, da, da. And the big conversation was around the January thing. Um, that we took it out of January this year, so having the same amount of early releases. Um, but I think it's, it's, it's important when the, the point that Jayden brings up is that the, the early release are professional relevant times, so it's just paramount to help our, our educators um, get the tools and resources so that they can, I think that's, that's the big conversation for at least for me is where those P D days fit in and how, and how do those fit and how they support our students and staff. Um, but I just, I didn't know if anybody had mentioned that January and then Ashley, you brought it up, but I I think Christina's point i- i- around November does make it a little difficult, but then, you know, again, talking to our educators and and having an earlier opportunity to mitigate issues versus in January when you're just coming back from Christmas break and, or the holiday break, I should say, excuse me. Um, so I just wanted to make sure that we were conversant in that. And again, that was, it was a pretty detailed conversation we had around that. So thank you.
I don't think I'm the only one that would maybe see a calendar with the thirty first start date, cause we don't have to bottom us now, but if you could provide us with, um, another option with that, I would be greatly appreciated because then we end on the thirteenth. And it doesn't go into that next week unless we have snow days. And I think that that's been part of the problem and we did it that year. And we survived, pretty sure we can start on here and still survive. Well, the twenty fifth was a little.
And that only happened once, back in two thousand nine.
Remember, this is a collaboration. So I'm, I'm all good with.
That would be my only personal change. I'm good with the rest of the calendar. I just would wanna see a start for thirty first.
Yeah, and that could, that would mimic what we did this year with Thursday, Friday. You have two days, you have three days, so, cause then you're kind of easing the kids back from the summer, getting themselves situated. How do you feel about it? As being a student?
All right. I think, I think that I agree that seeing a thing that started on the thirty first is important. But I do wanna stress just how important half days are, not just because like, it's fun to go home and relax, but I know that, uh, as well as a lot of my friends have like an insane amount of homework. And half days is really the day where we're able to like get this all done or whatever. If we have a big project, it's really, really helpful to have extra time sometimes, because I know a lot of my friends do clubs, they do sports, this gets them home super late, they still have a bunch of homework. Last night, it's my fault, I procrastinated a bunch, I had five hours of homework. Um, but you know, having those half days, especially for the amount of projects we have in high school, I think like they're integral as well as being professional development. So I just wanna like put that there, digest it, you know?
Well, you look like you had something besides, so. Thank you. Okay, um, I think we can move on to the policy, right?
So the next item. Policy sixty thirty, parent teacher communication. Um, we are updating this policy with the new ship and language. It also includes and in particular, it includes, um, the provisions that are now necessary under law with respect to remote learning. Shouldn't remote learning ever come back? Um, so, you know, there are pieces here that just had to be updated to be then in alignment with that legislation, those, um, rules. So if you look at the yellow, the yellow's the add, the blue is the strikeout. If you can't see the colors, um, it's italics usually and then strike, strikeout, but. Um, in addition, the procedure shall require the district to offer parents the option of attending parent teacher conferences by telephonic, video, or other conferencing platforms. Um, conducting one parent teacher conference in addition to the two flexible parent teacher conferences described above during periods when the district provides remote learning for more than three consecutive weeks and one additional parent teacher conference every six months thereafter for the duration of such period um, of remote learning for purposes of the policy and in accordance with applicable law. Remote learning means instruction by means of internet based software, etc., etc. So that was information that didn't exist prior that needed to be added to it. And then contact information being available, we do that and that's, but that was something we had to codify. Um, and the final piece here is, you must require a parent teacher or a teacher conducting a parent teacher conference required in section B. Um, to provide a copy of the document to be developed by the Department of Education. And so there's a document right now under development that we'll be providing with respect to, um, you know, food insecurity, mental health. Um, things like that. And so the, the policy says that that document will be provided, much like in a P P T would provide the, the parents, the rights, we say, would you like this? They either say, no thanks, I have fifty copies or yes. Um, and it just codifies that. Um, so that's basically it. I mean, the real, the real big piece to this is updating it so that it's in alignment with the new requirements for remote learning if we're ever in that situation again.
Any, uh, board members have any questions? Okay, let's go ahead and move on to, um. Fifty six.
Okay. The next one. Alright, policy fifty six hundred, equitable identification of gifted and talented. Um, in policy, I had that as fifty two hundred, but I did have little markers next to it saying I would have to change the number. They, I, you know, was sure fifty two hundred was already used and it was, so fifty six hundred is the new number. But fifty six hundred is the equitable identification of gifted and talented students. Um, in the laws that were put out by, uh, whether it were you of law, um, by shipping a good one. I was recommended that we do make sure we have a policy on this, so this is putting that on the books. So it's a creation of a new policy for the equitable identification of gifted and talented students. Basically lays some general language groundwork for that. Um, saying, you know, talks about Connecticut Legislature passing Act twenty one, one ninety nine, which requires um, the boards of ed to adopt a policy for the equitable identification of gifted and talented students. Um, and require multiple methods of identification for those students. And then it leaves it up to the, you know, the school systems who pretend to work out the regulation and, and, you know, what, what you use for criteria. When we had the policy meeting, I introduced, um, some varying ways that that's done. I also talked about the Rinzouli. Um, you know, kind of philosophy on that. We talked about how we currently do it in third grade with the co-guadi, and he was and, um, and other grade indicators. Um, parent guardians can request the P P T um, to have their child identified as gifted and talented, and, uh, we go through the process like we would in the other identification. Uh, one thing to note is it is a special education designation. So once that does officially get designated, that is now a student of special education. Um, and so that, that has some, um, things to consider for the district. So the language for the policy would be, uh, the language included here. There's no strikeouts because this is a new policy. Using the shipman's language and then the regulation would ultimately define what that criteria is that we are using in the district. So that's why you, um, you see at the bottom of it, it says um, that, you know, the district will, the regulation will have the information about to qualify, you know, how to qualify.
Any board members have any questions?
Uh, and I think Dr. Will had kind of hit it, hit it on this, uh, initially, but, you know, with the legislature in this last session, uh, what we ended up with was a series of requirements for policies that that must be in place by a certain date. And it in no way is saying that these activities weren't already going on. Or that we didn't have ways that we looked at our gifted and, and those kind of things. We simply had to codify it and put some of these policies in place where it's, it's written. Um, so thi- this is the first in a series of those that we'll be looking at, but we thought it was a good one to look out there and start talking about and having those conversations and, you know, putting this in place so that Dr. Will and his staff can then go on and evolve the, the next steps in the later months. More to come. Lady Marm, what is happening tonight? Anyway. Can't be unseen.
Yeah, I totally missed it. Okay, well, I have my, I have my paper over here. Um, okay, so any other board members have any questions? Okay. Uh, committee and liaison reports, um. We have.
So we did meet, uh, as Sophia and Dana both said, I was extremely pleased with the conversations. We talked about the two that you're seeing here. Uh, sixty thirty, fifty six hundred, we reviewed the, uh, the calendar. Answered a lot of the, or at least discussed a lot of the conversations that they were seeing ahead. Fifty twenty, yeah.
Um, we had a nice presentation from Mr. Staba about, um, the state of facilities. So he kind of just walked us through each school, what, um, had been worked on. Uh, the bus lot paving, I think just began, cause I saw the buses over in the tennis courts and then the rest of the lot is gonna be done next summer. Um, we talked a little bit about energy costs and solar. And he, um, we also talked about the capital request that was submitted to the town. So that will be coming, I think actually very soon, we'll get the first, um, presentation to the council that I believe, I guess maybe it's the town manager now, Dr. Willard who submits that? I don't know if it's still Lisa Hancock who submits it to the council?
Yes.
Okay, so that, that's gonna be coming. Um, and that was pretty much it.
Okay, um, not sure if anyone else have any other, uh, committee liaison reports. Not believe anything else. Uh, Chair Person's report, um, I just hope everyone had a wonderful Thanksgiving and I can't believe that it's not in December. Um, like you're gonna have a budget coming up here with all the budget talks, which is crazy.
Doctor Will looks like he's here in the headlights right now.
That's, that's really, okay, um, so let's move on to the, uh, board action that we have. So we have, uh.
Yeah, there's, there's a recommended motion.
Did you need to give any information about this? Cause it's just updating the name on the talent public schools children nutrition program account to reflect new staff.
Yeah, that motion, yeah. Of just signatories.
Right, um, does anyone wanna make this motion? No, this is not the right one. You have, but that's, that's, that's L three, we're on L one.
Madam Chair.
For the nutrition.
Oh, I'm sorry, I, you had that, right, okay.
The move that we changed the name on the Talon Public Schools Child Nutrition Program account to Hiram Galarza, effective November thirtieth, twenty.
It doesn't say that.
Yeah, just, I, I don't know why it's on. It shouldn't say there.
Okay, sorry, uh, to her, Galarza Espinoza, effective November thirtieth, twenty twenty two.
Sophia Shake second.
Okay, um. At this point, um, then you, if board members don't have any further questions on this, I'll go ahead.
I didn't have a quick, who's, who's on this account currently?
Uh, we'll do this next.
Okay, so this is just switching business, but you're, you're on this one and you have been.
Yeah, this, this one doesn't, either I'm on it, doesn't require you to be on it.
Okay.
You know, some of them require goals, some of them, this one is just updating that one signature, that's what we need. The other one there, we needed both of those.
Didn't we have joint signatures on it?
This isn't, um, this is, uh, this is to be the name on the child nutrition program account.
Um, okay, program, not bank.
Yeah, yeah, and everything else, everything does have to.
That's, okay, thank you.
So are there, are there other ones that we're gonna need to do this?
This should, I tried to get all the ones I was aware of in this.
Okay.
There should not be that many more.
Should be good.
Anything else? Any other board members? I don't see any hands raised. Um, okay, so we'll go ahead and do the roll of votes since we have split. We'll start in the room first.
Hi.
Dana?
Hi.
Even?
Hi.
Yeah?
Hi.
Laura?
Hi.
And I as well, therefore this passes. Let's move on to L two.
This is your goals. And so you're making an official motion, we should accept the vote. Or not that you're a goal.
Okay. Um, I will entertain the motion. Like a bunch of crickets.
Sophia Shake, I move to approve, approve the board goals.
Dana problem second.
Okay, um, any further discussion?
So I guess, uh, my question is by approving these goals, cause I, the last meeting I was, well, uh, we came up with the three or we had little bit. It's whatever was bad, like, uh, worked it down, uh, to these three, and I'm, and I'm to three. Uh, but we were then gonna go in and flesh out and do, I guess, picture. I don't know, how were we gonna track that? So by approving it here, we have proven just these three and there'll be further discussion on the, the rest of that, or?
I think we, I think we did go through and pre, um.
Yeah, you did. It's linked on your, it's on. Yeah, you did, it's linked on your, it's on the dashboard, it's linked as, uh, third.
Yeah, because Mr. Nick was walking us through everything with what.
You did identify a bunch of things, here, I can pull it up.
Yeah.
How did we do that without a quorum?
We just had a conversation.
Because you're not, these are your goals, which you'd be voting on, that is, that is a general understanding of the board, I don't think that, I've seen that. That's just what you're expecting.
Okay, so.
Your goals are what gets codified here and put on the agenda and all that.
That leads back to my initial question, our approval here is just the goal, not necessarily the stuff that was discussed. In the November. Okay, so at some point, are we then going to put it back on the board agenda to flesh those out with the measurements?
I think, uh, once you post on what we had done for all the work, and, you know, Nick gave us a wonderful, uh, post-it pad. With all of his notes on there.
Document has everything.
Is, without the quorum, we can't do business of the board, so we couldn't have flagged out those. But we still need to, I guess it's like.
I think that we spent a quite a deal of time on those, um, to be perfectly honest, along with the. Gentleman who came to work on that with us.
And, and nothing against the, the efforts that, I watched the video, and it, it certainly looks like a lot was done, uh. But by policy, we couldn't have done that officially. Ninety one seventy says, the majority is necessary for transaction of business, so to make that fleshing out official, we needed a quorum. Uh, not saying it's not good work, and that we can't get there, but I don't think we can prove what couldn't have happened.
I don't, I, I don't think they sought to do that.
No, I think we're, we are approving the board goals as stated, that we have the three. And we do have everything.
This is on the dashboard, this is what the board actually did.
This could be perfectly frank, I'm not looking to sit through another two hour, um, conversation about this when we already did.
And I fully recognize that, we just, we didn't do it as a board if we did it in a meeting with our board.
Well, this one wasn't done, this particular thing was done in the prior. And, and you're not voting, per se, you're voting on your goals tonight, but this was done in the prior meeting, not in meeting, not in the last meeting. This was done in the goal meeting.
What, they identified, the identification of three, I completely agree, uh, but I guess I keep going back to the then.
Well, this.
What was done on the, yes. So when I look at the minutes that we approved at the beginning, uh, it talks. That additional work, but they're coming up with those, and those were done during that two hours we talked about, Madam Chair. So for that effort to be codified, for that to be something we approve and move forward, then. That's gotta happen in a meeting that has a quorum. So if we're voting just to approve the three here.
We are voting to, uh, approve the three, so. We can keep going around on this wheelhouse, so let's vote to vote on the three, and if not, if you choose to not vote it for it, then that's fine too.
The, the, the third thing. Did that get finalized then in meetings? In the November.
This was finished in November nine.
Okay, because that, I remember one and two, but the third one is the one that I don't remember we got quite that far.
This was finished, I haven't, this document hasn't been touched since that time. Other than the, you know, like this was.
This right.
From that night.
Um, that was already there.
That was already there?
Yep.
Well, this, this, this is, uh, this goes back to this. These three are what you ended up.
Yeah.
Coming to, and then that's what got transferred over to this document.
Okay, but that was November ninth, not October twenty six.
Yeah, the, this guy.
I just don't, I don't love number three, so that's why I'm confused, but that's. I think if I remember correctly, we kind of threw that all in there, but I, I think our plan was to tweak it. In another meeting, but that's fine, I just.
Yeah, and I, you can look back at. Whatever your minutes were there, I think that the, this was made green because the board, that was what we moved forward, that was.
That was what we had.
Moved forward.
Correct.
And then we changed it on that sheet to green.
Oh, okay, maybe that's because, like, the holistic was throwing me off, so there's no holistic in there.
Well, I think holistic was the one word that.
That we, okay, so maybe that's what was playing the whole.
That was on Nick.
Yeah, I mean, again, I just copied what you were doing and moved it over and.
Yeah, I know, it was helpful when it came to all of. That, and, you know, like I said, this post-it was something that should be framed. So let's go back to this, um, let's just have this motion, um. The second end, we had a discussion, so let's do a vote. Um, we'll call, from here, so go ahead.
Um, all right, so the motion to extend, I don't know.
Uh, again, that, I just think that the fleshing out of it was done in a meeting that couldn't have happened, so we're not ready to know.
Okay, Dana?
Hi.
Jayden?
Hi.
Hey, Sophia?
Hi.
Lord?
Nay.
And I will go hi. So then with the majority, it is approved. Okay, let's move on to L three, the Stevenson Scholarship.
Okay, so, um, this is just right back where we were. It's just to update the signatories.
Did you have a recommended?
Yeah, I do, I'm sorry.
Alright, Madam Chair, motion to update the signatories on the M and T bank account to the Stevenson Scholarship, the current staff on the PPS Superintendent's Office. That Dr. Walter Willett and Hiram.
Sophia Shake second.
Okay, um, any discussion on this, if anyone wants to raise their hand or say anything? If not, we'll do a roll call vote, I don't see no hands, let's start off, go ahead. She gets it, she's, she's typing over there pretty fast. Hey Dana?
Hi.
Hi.
Yeah.
Hi. Hi.
I as well, therefore this passes as is, so you're gonna change it, and this one you have is full name. Okay. At this time, I will open it up for whole participation, and it might be, um, limited to items on the agenda, if you could please raise your hand. List your name and address for the record. And we will go from there. Going once. Going twice. Okay, now we can move on to points of information. If any board members has.
Actually, I have something, just, when we were talking about the calendar. Dr. Willie, you mentioned that the staff was concerned about the E S Y program, and then they wouldn't have enough of a break, if you will. Between that and the start of school, so that just kind of got me thinking, are we planning on doing the COVID? Related six week.
E S Y existed prior to the big one that we did.
So how many weeks are we anticipating?
Not the same, it's just a smaller group, but the staff that works it.
So it'll still be six weeks, it's just.
Be five or six, but it's, it's, it's just another one of the considerations, the staff that works it would have. We have to get staff willing to work it, they're more willing to work it if.
If it's six weeks, or are they willing to work it more than less weeks?
I think that the, what was presented to me, because the, the calendar is a synthesis of people's feedback.
I'm more concerned about E S Y and how we're gonna pay for it, if it's a six week. Okay, we're going back to the old fashioned way, if you will.
Budget question, the E S Y is, is in the.
Is in the budget, it's kind of the pre-COVID.
It's nowhere near as expensive as the.
Okay, that, that was my, my, more my concern.
Yeah.
Students are in that one?
It fluctuates because it's students in special populations and, and special exceptionalities that are designated for it versus. So, you're looking at about a third. For, of the group that we have.
Okay. Anyone else at this time? Guys are good? Okay, let's go ahead and I will, um, entertain a motion for adjournment.
A motion to adjourn.
Just in a second, all in favor can say aye.
Aye. Aye.
Aye.